Okay, the next thing on the agenda is approval of our meeting dates for the year 2012. And you see them listed there. We can approve these now, we have to do this. At the beginning of the year, we can always amend this as necessary. You'll notice that there's only one meeting in December.
I looked at them all, I can make a motion, at least to get it onto discussion.
Good, okay.
That will approve this as written or proposed.
Okay, so a motion is to make to approve those meeting dates.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, passes unanimously. Next is to approve the town clerk's report. Which you have in front of you. Entertain a motion to so approve that report.
So moved.
Second, or second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, passes unanimously. Next are our minutes. We have minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on November 15, 2011, for approval. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
One little minor thing, sorry.
Yes.
Page two. Second paragraph, or sentence, I guess, sorry. A copy of the signed call.
Oh.
Easy. And I think that's it.
Okay, any other comments? So, all those in favor, the motion to approve is amended? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, passes unanimously.
I will abstain.
Mr. Groth, your things. Next are the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on November 22, 2011. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, passes unanimously. Next is the First Selectmen's Report. The first item I'd like to report on is that, as I suggested, I think at our last meeting, that we would nominate Constance L. Cryer-Eckland, 27 Cedar Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut, for the 2012 Community Impact Hero Awards, which are sponsored by the American Red Cross. And the categories for this award, as far as Eckland is concerned, is community impact. And you'll see in the letter that she was instrumental in organizing support for the Amity Post Office at 1449 Whaley Avenue not to be closed. And I think we've mentioned her efforts, the number of petitions that she got signed, and her general enthusiasm for doing that. And I heard on the radio today that the government has postponed the closing of all post offices.
Yeah.
Yeah, it stays till the spring, so.
Happy holidays.
Right.
Yep.
So hopefully she could, maybe she could take care of credit for that. And you notice there's a letter of support from Jonathan Gorm, and also, I thought it was a letter from, oh, that's to, no, I thought it was a letter from Rosa Delora.
No, it wasn't.
No, okay. Anyway, so I'll just bring you up to date on that, I'll let you know how we make out. Since we last met, Veterans Day was held on November 11, in honor, and we honored specifically BFC Eric Soufreen. It was very well attended. I think it was the largest attendance we've had at Veterans Day in recent memory. Congresswoman Delora, Senator Crisco, Representative Claritas were there. The Soufreen family was there, there was dedication of a stone, which has his name and some remarks about him. And there was also a bench donated by an anonymous donor. So it was a very moving event. And Joe Hellauer was instrumental in making those arrangements. Some of you may know that Joe just underwent surgery last week, and he is home recovering. I spoke to him on the phone recently. He's in good spirits, and hopefully he'll be back shortly. I attended and spoke at a dinner honoring Catherine Gartland for her service to Woodbridge over the years on November 12, at the Country Club of Woodbridge, which was well-attended. I also attended the following, on the following day, on November 13, Tavern Night at the Darling House, which we've been planning to try to have a tour of that Darling House for the Board of Selectmen. We haven't been successful in arranging that, but maybe we should do that. It's one of the historical homes, the only historical home that's owned by the town, so you should get a chance to take a look at that. I attended the Interfaith Service of Benet Jacob on November 22. On November 29, we had a meeting with representative of the gas company with further discussion about extending the gas line into Woodbridge to service the various town buildings here in the town center, and also the Amity High School, the Beecher Road School, Benet Jacob, Church of the Assumption, and Trinity Evangelical, I believe. And so, we anticipate a formal presentation by representatives of the gas company to the Board of Selectmen in January. We will be providing them some additional information, so we'll get an idea of what the cost of conversion would be, and then they would come up with a schedule of when they would implement this. So there would be, if this were implemented, and they seem very enthusiastic about this, it would result in some substantial savings over time in energy costs. Tony and I met with representatives of the West River Protection Committee in regard to the Ponley Dam and an application for a grant from the Connecticut Fund for the Environment to sponsor or underwrite part of that removal, and I think that application's being filed.
Yeah, they're gonna do the legwork on that.
Okay. And then on December 1, I attended the opening of the Woodbridge Room at our library, and then through the efforts of Aldana Noda, the chairman, and Karen Cusick, the chair of the renovation committee, and Charlie Getch was there, who's a former member of the Woodbridge Board of Selectmen, and his family, and members of her family were there. I believe Dr. Getch is the one who donated monies for the establishment of the Woodbridge Room. So the lighting has improved there considerably, it looks very nice, and it'd be a great place to visit, and hopefully they'll put some Woodbridge artifacts in that, to make it even more interesting. On last Friday, my daughter and I attended the Christmas concert at Trinity Evangelical Church, Pastor Miles Arons, it was, Arons, rather, it was a wonderful evening of song, and it's all done by a lot of parishioners and others. And today, we hosted the holiday lunch for the various mayors and first selectmen in the area, and it was done at the Country Club of Woodbridge, and I think that's the last event for this calendar year there, and the food was excellent. So, and tomorrow night is the annual town holiday party at 6:30, I believe, at Antonio, so you're all quite obviously invited. So that's my report. Tom?
Okay. See if I can read my notes from the Amity Board of Ed the other night. They voted on new officers, and they are as follows, Rudy Gdanskis Secretary, Sue Cohen Vice Chair, William Blake Chair, Jim Horowitz Treasurer, Steve Mayo Assistant Treasurer. They, let's see, they recognized V. Gibbons, Orange Middle School, as Connecticut Assistant Principal of the Year. Very good, great honor for her and for the school as well. They also started discussions about possible action to appoint a Board of Ed as a Superintendent Search Committee. So their search committee is going to be the Board of Ed, and they voted to nominate themselves as the search committee, so they're going to start that, and then they're going to begin negotiations with a search service. And they also had an interesting discussion about the budget votes, and possibly taking the budget to a district meeting as opposed to, like a town meeting as opposed to a referendum, which I thought was kind of interesting. And the, I think the point was brought up that regardless of how many people come out for referendums, it's still more people for a town meeting. And they'd have to coordinate it within each town, within each district, if that, when they would have it. But the, they decided to table that discussion until Dr. Brady could speak with the three selectmen about that particular issue, but I thought that was an interesting conversation.
Who was voting, who was suggesting?
Well, it was, it was just a discussion on the, on the agenda. I think it was just brought up by.
It's been done in the past. When I was Register of Voters.
Right.
We didn't have any Amity budget referendum, I remember.
Right.
It was a while ago.
And maybe it was because of.
But the cost and every, I guess it just, for whatever reason.
Right, we did that one year. We had the marathon votes.
The towns agreed to not do it, so. It was only once.
So, yeah, so they thought, they discussed that a little bit, but until they could get to the three selectmen, then, first selectmen, they're going to table that discussion.
Yeah, I just ask clarification. Did you say that they were going to be separately in each town, or just have the regular district meeting?
Well, as far as I understood it, and again, it's still in discussion phases, but they, it would be, you would vote in each individual town, I thought.
That's what I noticed. They did the last time, a district meeting, and you could go.
It was at Amity High School.
It was at Amity High School.
Oh, so it was at the one place.
Right after the meeting to go to referendum normally that they take, but they didn't have a referendum.
That was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, they didn't get into a large discussion about it, because they hadn't, they hadn't brought the subject to the first selectman yet, but you should expect at least a follow-up. And, let's see. Charles Britton, the principal at Amity, had some, he said some bad news, that there've been a number of arrests of students at Amity High School for possession of marijuana and stronger drugs. And they've been working with the PD and with the resource officer at the high school to deal with these issues. And they believe it's a small, small group of repeat students. And I think that was the last year they brought in the dogs, and went through the entire school. So, he believes, and I think it was a general consensus of the board, that don't seem to see a lot more of it than you see anywhere else. It's, it's a national problem, and they're trying to deal with it at the school. And they're still working with, with the police, as I said, and the resource officer. And, let's see, they also, under the curriculum committee, they added three new textbooks and eight new courses to their offering. So a lot of them were in the arts, they have some language courses and some AP courses as well. Facilities committee did not meet, and the student representative brought forth what I thought was an interesting proposal. Right now, the way parking works at the high school, it's $100 per year park, and that's what I paid for my kids when they were there. And part of the issue and the complaint that some of the students have had over the years is, kids get their driver's licenses at different parks, different times during the year, and a lot of parents or kids would say they didn't want to buy a $100 pass if they're only going to have their license for half the year or part of the year.
Prorate it.
Yeah, so what they decided to do is to try to prorate it, and it would be $25 per semester, and they would pay in advance, so you know when you'd be, about when you'd be getting your license. You couldn't each term go up and pay, you would pay in advance, but you would pay only for what you would use. And they, they were estimating that it would probably generate as much money, if not more, because you'd be getting new students that wouldn't have bought the pass because they were only going to use it part of the year. You'd have the kids that are going to be using it all year anyway, they would purchase it, so you'd get a little bit more. That's their, that's their belief. So, the board voted to approve the prorated schedule with the option of changing it back if they don't generate the money they'd hoped to, and apparently it generates anywhere from $37,000 to $38,000 a year. So, and that was all I had.
Great.
Great.
Let's see. The Conservation Commission met this month, but it was mainly for their FOI session. They're meeting tomorrow, and on their agenda, one topic was, they're looking at potentially Woodbridge having a more strict, I guess, ordinance about the pesticides that you can use. So, they're, they're looking at that topic. The TPZ met, and the new owner of Oak Lane, Mr. Dean Natale, so I think next TPZ meeting, he will be applying for his use permit, and so that's things like how they'll be open, and how many parties they can do, and that involves the liquor serving. So that's probably the highlight of the TPZ meeting. And QPOP met, so that's progress. We, you know, appointed Laura, and she's the vice chair, and Richard Levine, I guess, is the chair, but the point is they met, that's a good thing. And so we saw one of the members tonight. So, I think that's just really positive, that we've got a board that's now back to function, so I guess we'll continue to get updates from QPOP. That's all.
Okay. Lawrence?
Yeah, the Recreation Commission met last Monday night, and I mentioned that it received a presentation from the playground group about the amended memorandum of understanding. The most important thing, I think, to come from that meeting was a discussion of the realigned walking trail around the Fitzgerald property, and the idea that for environmental and conservation reasons, it can't be brought north of the Frog Pond. Is that the proper name, Frog Pond?
Yeah.
But, but anyway, perhaps with increased signage and awareness, safety, safety issues can be addressed, that walkers and joggers and cars can continue to share the existing path there. But from that came a discussion of the funding. We all remember that there is funding in place for that realignment.
Right.
You know, that night I could remember how much it was, and tonight I can't. I think it was 75?
No, it took 30,000.
30,000.
Thank you. That night I knew that, but tonight I couldn't. They are wondering if that $30,000, which is already in the budget, might be re-appropriated toward a vestibule, or a portico, or some weather protection.
Shelter.
Shelter, thank you, to, to help them, especially through this winter, with, with the door to that recreation office at Beecher Road School. It, I guess it just blows a cold wind every time they open the door, and it takes a while for the office to heat up again, and then the next resident comes in to do business, and it starts all over again, so.
We could look into it.
Yeah.
So since, since there is money in the FY12 budget, they wondered if it might be re-appropriated, and I thought that was, I think that's a reasonable request, something we could explore. And, and then they went through the rest of capital budget, which I guess will be combined with their October presentation. Anyway, so that was, that was the rest of that discussion. As far as the Woodbridge Board of Education goes, comparable to Superintendent Search at Amity, the Woodbridge Board of Education is looking for a new principal to begin next summer, and the superintendent was authorized by the board to engage a search firm to assist with that, and so that's going forward. It is also working to absorb some surprise costs. The insurer of the property there, I guess, or the, the insurance company the district has to cover liabilities, said two of the three playgrounds on the property are unsafe, and as I understand it, are in fact closed.
That was mentioned in capital court.
Yeah, and, but what they're, what they're hoping to do, at least for one of the playgrounds, is address it sooner with anticipated surplus from the FY12 operating budget. The trouble now is that one source of an anticipated revenue has evaporated. We all saw a decision from the Labor Relations Board about, about the custodial services of the school. Anyway, there may not be, there may not be that source of surplus funding to address the playground issue, and so that's, that's one of the things. And that, I guess from that, a segue into preparations for the FY13 operating budget. I attended the finance subcommittee meeting Monday night, and superintendent and finance director made a presentation to that subcommittee of the board. It will go to the full board for approval next Monday night. They, they have costs that, that are going to be, I think, difficult for us to reconcile with, with, with our spending. Anyway, that's for, that's for them to present and for us to discuss at another time, but what I want to get to is a five-year projection that I had never seen before from the Woodbridge Board of Education, and while enrollment is projected to stay flat, or maybe even tail off a little, not much, but a little, these costs are projected to continue rising because of the fixed cost of operating the building, and the fixed costs in providing education for primary school population of the town. So, what, I guess what, what I got, what I came away with from that is, is the idea that, that the Board of Education budget is expected to grow over the next few years, according to these projections. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Susan?
The Library Commission did meet this week, it was a rebrief meeting. The bulk of the discussion was about their operations budget. There's going to be, they had some personnel, I guess, last year who was not on the staff for a good part of the year, so FY13 going forward is going to show a bump up in personnel costs. They're looking to upgrade some of their scanner, copier, and wireless router systems. Other than that, it's kind of steady as she goes, over there. The good news is, very good news, is, is that we are one of the busiest libraries in the region, and that beats very well from a systems point of view, and everybody on the mission was very happy about that, so.
Your question?
Okay. The Fire Commission met on November 21. They went over their operating budget, and the chief noted that repair and maintenance costs for equipment, as well as the building, will probably have an over budget accounts. There are several line items that are over budget due to damage from the summer and fall storms. Hopefully we can recoup some of those costs, you know, from some of these FEMA applications. There are two hydrants that remain that need to be repaired. The capital allotment for generators has also been used to purchase new generators. The chief noted that several generators were loaned out to residents during the storms, specifically with medical needs and things like that, which was a very good community service. Jerry okay? Sorry. Oh, she's okay, all right. Fire marshal reported that incident reports, which must be submitted to the state, are on schedule for August, on time, for August, September, and October. Chief Rowland reported that a slip resistance test is being conducted on the apparatus bay four, and no matter what is finally decided, no remediation will happen until spring, as the trucks have been moved outside, they have to move the trucks outside to do this, so whatever happens, it won't happen for a while. And the famous punch list of uncompleted items since construction remains unresolved. The status of firefighter physicals, explaining the policy for those who do not remain current for their checkups is being reviewed by the chief, and I guess you know more about that, Tom, than anybody, but I guess he's really working very hard on making sure all firefighters are current in their, in their checkups.
Sure.
Which is a good thing. The computer service migration has been completed. Let's see, since the, regarding the October snowstorm, the fire department responded to as many or more calls than with Hurricane Irene. The crews started working on Saturday at 3 o'clock, and cleared trees from roads all night long, helping to keep the roads in town passable for emergency vehicles. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be at the firehouse this coming Saturday, from noon to 3, for anyone who's interested in talking to Santa. And Santa and Mrs. Claus will deliver gifts on December 21st and 22nd to children within the town. They were also offering up the firehouse for a blood drive on December 28, from 1 to 6, if anyone is interested. And, let's see, we talked about the chief's vehicle, and the next meeting is this coming Monday, December 19. And I attended human services this past Monday, December 5. Mary Ellen updated the commission on the proposed gas stove, which they are going to include in their operating budget, because they feel it's not going to be an expensive item.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, to go into capital, I guess. The Woodbridge Senior Center Triad is sponsoring a program on civil preparedness called Are You Ready? This is going to be held in January, on the 24th, with a snow date of January 31. The panel will consist of the Red Cross, Representative Deputy Chief Ray Stewart, Mary Ellen Raca, Leslie Balch from Quinnipiac, Paul Needman of District Animal Control, and Finn Lazar is going to join us, join them, from United Illuminating. The holiday luncheon for the senior center, sponsored by the Rotary Club, was held on December 2. There is approximately $19,209 in the food and fuel fund. 26 Woodbridge residents, I'm sorry, households received Thanksgiving food baskets on November 22. Seven of the baskets were given to senior households, and the department is now working on holiday baskets and toy distribution. Four employees were certified in the Heart Saver First Aid Training, and two were certified in CPR, AED. AMR provided the instructor for those sessions. And the last youth evening program was on November 18. For whatever reason, only 30 kids from Bethany and 39 from Woodbridge. Usually it's more attended, so there must have been some kind of a conflict. But they had a three-lane bungee run in DJ. The next program is scheduled for Friday, December 9, at Bethany Town Hall. I guess I'll get an update at the next meeting. And several Bethany middle, middle school faculty attended an anti-bullying program held by the Anti-Defamation League, and the program for students will probably be held in Bethany sometime in January, and their next meeting is Monday, January 9. And that's everything.
Great, okay.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays. Our, our next meeting is on January 11, I believe.
Yes.
And does anyone have any further comments?
Is it possible to just throw one topic out there, see if we want to talk about it or not, and what we could do at the next meeting? Could we talk for 10 minutes about maybe ideas on how we may move forward with the country club and that topic, just even if it's the 30,000-foot view?
You mean the lighting yesterday?
Yeah.
Well, as I suggested earlier, that I think we should explore all options that we have, and get a recommendation as to what those options are, and then have them presented to the Board of Selectmen, and then have a public discussion about those.
That, that report today, I think, is great. And then I got a report that I guess was the USGA.
Right.
Which is good, because that talks about the course. There was a report that had to do with MDM.
MDM did their own analysis and estimate.
Discussed the facility, though, right?
No, it was the course only.
That was the whole, like, whole.
Yeah, yeah.
If we, if, if, if one option is having, you know, someone run it for us, like in the past, if that doesn't work out, or whatever, if we are to go down the road of, you know, we want to run it ourselves, I'm of the opinion that I'd love to be able to allow the town to, to vote on that. Is that possible? Is it possible to have a referendum on such a thing, like?
There's no requirement for that, I mean, the charter doesn't require that.
I didn't think so. I just, my concern, when I, I've only been able to look at part of these reports, but my concern is the, sort of the amount of liability digests to understand what you're going to have to put into this club over many years. And just making sure that if we're going to go down the road of running it, that everyone just understands that's. just understands that's part of the deal, once you agree to do that. And I'm, you know, I feel like good information needs to be put together that the public can see, but ultimately, I feel like that's a decision where it should be the public at large that agrees, all right, this is what we're gonna do, and we're, we're up for it.
I wanna anticipate that the new Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, as we, we're calling it now, will submit a budget to us, even though it'll be late. An operating budget and also a capital budget.
That'll be, that'll be a public meeting.
For five, five years, as required by everybody else. And so then we'll get a, you know, a sort of a feeling of where we are with that, and there'll be, you know, a discussion about that, that'll be presented to us.
And if we can get that situation stabilized, are we, let's just say we had a vendor tomorrow, or someone who can operate this thing, are we gonna try and just reevaluate, what do we wanna do with this? Do we wanna attempt to develop a piece of the property? Was the vote yesterday about the Toll Brothers was about fifty-five housing, or if it was shaped another way, and give people a couple different choices, so we can somehow get public feedback on?
Yeah, I, I think once we see what those options are, then we will have a public information session, just like we did before we decided to tie the Woodbridge Country Club. We had a meeting and got public input, and the input was almost all in favor. This is before we had a special town meeting.
Right.
So we knew that that was the direction we wanted to go in. No one was concerned about what the budget would be to do all this, and so, I think the more we talk about this in public. But I think there, you know, as a result of yesterday's vote, there are a number of people who do not want condos in Woodbridge, I'm convinced of that, no matter what it is. So there's that group. There's other people who may not like Toll Brothers, or that people feel, you know, we just leave it as it is. But I think we're gonna have to get beyond that and have a discussion about what our options are, and then to find out what the consensus of the town is for those options.
I think if we do go with public meetings, we, I feel like we have to have like an A, B, and a C, cause I, like, the public wants to be able to say yes or no to something. They don't wanna have to come and give us ideas. They're, you know, they're comfortable saying, that was a bad idea, shouldn't have even brought it up. But I feel like we've gotta come up with maybe a couple different ideas, and those public meetings are gonna be our only chance to gauge them.
Right. But I think we're all in the same way, I'm not.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments about that?
Not right now.
Okay. All of that. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. See you tomorrow, or in January or later. All right? Take care. Motion to adjourn? So, all in favor?